I'd like to call the meeting of March 18th, 2013, is the Board of County Commissioners, regular meeting to order at this time, at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to welcome those of you in attendance tonight. We'd like to see folks come out and take an interest in their local government. Media's here, we recognize them. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the North Stand at Tars, their chairman, Mr. Blake Underwood. If you have your group stand. These are young, these are younger, young Republican club from North Stanley, and we're glad to have you. Thank you for being here. At this time, if you would, please let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We ask now that you bless us one more time. Bless this meeting, and bless us that we might make those decisions that would be in the best interest of our citizens and pleasing to you. And be with those leaders throughout the country, whatever level they may be, that they might make wise decisions and have the courage to do the right thing. We simply ask in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Here in all, I entertain a motion to approve as presented, have a motion by Commissioner Dennis and a second up by Commissioner Donovan, in discussion. Here in all, in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Our first agenda item this evening is a presentation from our school board superintendent, Dr. Terry Griffin. Welcome. And I'll let you introduce those folks that might be here with you.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you this afternoon. With me is Dr. Sandra Carter. Dr. Carter is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. I also have Mr. Bill Josie, as you know, is our Chief Finance Officer, and Mr. Brandon DeLu. And Mr. DeLu is the Chief Technology Officer for the system. And of course, they represent the three divisions of our school system. And together, we are working together to increase course options and delivery options for the children in Stanley County schools. And we'd just like to start by saying that our goal is to increase the cohort graduation rate, and to be recognized as a school system that supports economic development here in Stanley County. I'd like to preface the presentation by saying that continuous improvement is a process that involves receiving, evaluating, and feedback from our stakeholders. And that is the primary reason that we're here tonight, is to share with you, to get some valuable feedback. I'd like to begin on the light side. Why does it feel like to propose change? We've all asked ourselves this question before. And, like the cat that you see here on the slide, sometimes we feel like we're going through the valley of the shadow of death when we start making changes. So, some of the things that we're going to be talking tonight are small changes, while others are a little larger changes in terms of our instructional program here in Stanley Here you see my first and foremost goal for Stanley County, and that is to establish a culture of high expectations for all students. And that's all students, whether they plan to enter the workforce upon graduation, or whether they plan to enter a two- or a four-year post-graduation program. The big point here is to ensure that all of our graduates are career and college ready. So, we ask the question, how do we do this? First, I believe we do it by delivering a rigorous, relevant curriculum that is aligned with student interests and employment trends. Secondly, I believe it's important that we create multiple delivery options. And finally, that we obtain and leverage parent and community involvement. Each year, we survey our high school students on their career and post-graduation interests. So, as we started to look at this process of continuous improvement in terms of our instructional program here in Stanley County, and how to expand course offerings, we started, we pulled the data from our student interest survey data for several years. And here you'll see, in the order of interest, the areas that our students in Stanley County tell us they're interested in. First being the health and medical field. Second, the arts. Thirdly, engineering and technology. And fourth, public service. The next thing that we did as we started working on this project is we asked ourselves, what does Stanley County schools currently offer to our students? Of course, we have our general curriculum that we offer at each of our high schools. We have advanced placement courses, and then we have honors courses, and then a range of career and technical education courses. And I'm not showing you this because I'm saying, wow, we're doing a great job with this. One of the things that this slide brought to our attention is the need to expand the number of higher-level course offerings that we are offering our students across the county, and to cover a wide range of interest areas. The next thing that we did is we started looking at our current delivery of instruction. How do we deliver instruction in our high schools? You're probably not surprised at what we found, that the largest percentage of our instruction is delivered in a traditional classroom setting, with a small percentage at the top of the pyramid, be it through the North Carolina Virtual Public School, or through partnerships with online courses through Stanley Community College. But before I go any further, I would like to stress, the need to offer the basic courses in a traditional setting will always be recognized. And certainly, I'm not here to say that I believe that all courses should be online courses. I certainly recognize that. But, in the spirit of continuous improvement, I believe that we must be open to looking at alternative methods for delivering courses, and look at best practice associated with virtual and blended models of instruction. So, when we think about that, the question comes to mind, how do we balance our finances with those opportunities that addresses our varied student interests, rigorous coursework, and also course delivery options? What we believe is that we can increase our efficiency and be more equitable in terms of what we're offering to students across the district by leveraging the power of technology for blended and complete online instruction, and by strengthening our current partnerships. Number one, Stanley Community College through the Career and College Promise, and NC Learn, as well as creating partnerships with schools such as the North Carolina School of Science and Math, and, again, those partnerships with our local businesses. As this diagram shows, our goal is to expand the virtual partnerships, but, again, to maintain as the foundation of instruction, the traditional classroom instruction model. I'd like to highlight some of the options that we've already taken hold of. Next year, in Stanley County, for the 2013-14 school year, we currently have over 120 juniors and seniors here in Stanley County that have signed up to take courses through the North Carolina School of Science and Math, and this will be delivered via an online platform in all of our high schools. So, again, this just shows you a little bit of an idea of some of the courses that our students were able to register for. Secondly, we are very excited about Career and College Promise. And what Career and College Promise has been up in operation for at least two years, going into the second year. I see this as a wonderful way to expand those course options that we can deliver to our students at no cost to them. And many of our graduates will be able to graduate from high school with one to even possibly two years of college education, whether they plan to go, again, to the two-year technical school, or transfer to a four-year university. And then finally, the next step that we would like to do is to look at implementing specialized learning sites across Stanley County. Now, again, Stanley County, as you well know, is spread out over 400 miles in our high schools. If you compare our high schools in Stanley County, they're relatively small in size to many of the high schools across the state. And not that that's a bad thing, but just to say, if we had a high school with 2,000, 2,500 students, it would not be uncommon to find all four of these programs housed in that one large high school. And that's not us. So, as we researched best practice and looked around at, you know, what we could do to bring exciting new programs to our students, who I believe deserves the same opportunities as students in large districts, we looked at, and what we proposed is to have a focus site at each of our four high schools. We believe that these topics, these focus areas are aligned with student interests, as well as job employment opportunities now, as well as those in the future. The first site that we propose will focus on health and social sciences. And within each of the academies, or within each of the focus sites, there will be academy pathways. And in this particular site, three of the pathways that you see here, or academies, are advanced science studies, medical services, and social sciences. And, again, a lot of these pathways will be directly aligned with our partnerships with Stanley Community College and other institutions of higher learning, as we expand those local The next focus site that we propose to do is an engineering/technology site. And, again, this would be our site for advanced studies in mathematics. We propose to have multiple pathways in terms of engineering. And, again, this is a good example, if you notice here, also the construction end of it. So, we've tried to balance, again, and have career pathways embedded in these focus academies, along with the college-type programs. And then, business administration that would complement the engineering technologies. The third site would be a business, political science, and performing arts site. And, again, in this particular focus site, we propose to have the advanced studies and social studies, which would lend itself to studies in government, pre-law. Your public service tracks or pathways, trade and industrial, again, your cosmetology, and auto mechanics, some of our strong programs that are already in our high schools, firefighting and criminal justice, performing arts, and, again, business administration. Now, you're going to find a little bit of a crossover in some of these sites, because, again, our goal is not to take away from the programs that are already in our high schools that are successful, the goal is to add to. So, again, we don't intend to take away a program that's already successful in our schools. So, those that are being duplicated across the district and are successful will continue to move forward. And then finally, communication and performing arts. And the pathways that we would propose to begin with here are the advanced studies in literature and English language arts, as well as the performing arts and digital and world communications. The information that you see on the right of these slides, this just lists some of the courses that we are either currently offering, or those, the ones without stars, are those that we are currently offering already in the school system, and then those with stars are those that we propose to add to the curriculum in the coming years. Finally, just to pull it together, there's a slide, just an overview slide here, that kind of pulls everything that I've said together. And, again, this is a lot of information in a quick 10-minute presentation. But just to say, our goal is to prepare students for academic and career success, and we propose to do that. We recognize the need to increase course offerings, and as you move down on the flow chart, these are just some of the areas and the ideas that we're going to use to do that. We also know that we need to increase our course delivery. And, again, I believe that we can leverage the power of technology to help us be more efficient, to condense those small classes that are being scattered across the district, so one teacher is teaching those for students across the district, and then to implement our specialized learning sites, which have focus academies in them. And finally, the end product, what we hope to accomplish by doing this, is career-ready graduates plus college-ready graduates will contribute to the economic growth for Stanley County. And, again, this is not something that is going to come out in full force, fully finished, next year all at one time. This is a four-year, we're proposing a four-year implementation of this project, and we will roll out additional academies as our finances and budget allow us to do so. But we'll be happy to entertain any questions. We've, you know, been sharing this with our parent, my parent advisory groups, and different business advisory groups, and individuals across the county, because we need the feedback, it is a work in progress. But, again, we're very excited about some of the possible programs we have on the horizon for students here in Stanley County.
Anyone have a question or comment? I'd just like to say thank you for this presentation, and, you know, I've advocated for a long time that education is where you start to have economic growth. And I think this is a very worthwhile program that you're undertaking, and I wish you the best of luck.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, I guess.
Okay.
I don't want you to become the cat walking in front of the dogs when you show this, but I do have a couple of questions. On one slide, you indicated that you have a student interest survey. How are we matching that, I believe it was slide five?
Mm-hmm.
How are we matching that to what jobs will be available when these students get of age?
Well, again, we have looked at some of the forecasting, and, you know, again, we know that, you know, I'm very aware that Stanley Community has done a lot of work in that area, too, and certainly the health and medical fields, as we look at the baby boomers, you know, getting older and everything, that area is going to be there. I think engineering and technology, again, is a very sound field as far as moving into the future, as well as public service. Again, the arts is, you know, that is an area that, I believe the arts has a place in any program, because, again, that balanced, well-rounded program. So, we have looked at it, and we're trying to forecast the best we can, and to work with our institutions of higher learning to help guide us into the appropriate pathways within these broad areas.
And one of the reasons I asked that question, I was going to report later to my fellow commissioners, that the Central Line Council of Government has this project called Connect Our Future, and they're very heavily involved with things that are looking forward, so is our Economic Development Commission, as far as what jobs may be available. It's astounding to me, the different things that are available now for kids that weren't available when those of us who are sitting up here came through yawns ago, when we tapped them with the, on the chisel, right? Right with. But more astounding, I think, is that I'm not sure that even the kids today know what might be available for them five or 10 years from now. And especially coming from a rural county, they may not be exposed to that, or if they especially are not involved in any kind of vocational training, they may not be exposed to what's already out there. So, I would certainly encourage us to do whatever we can to not only train us as far as the jobs that they may be interested in, but also train the students at what jobs may be available, and get them thinking in the direction that they could possibly go. On slide number nine...
Mr. Donovan, may I add, that one of the things here, that another phase of this whole project is to push this down to the middle school level, because I truly believe you don't wait until high school, like you said, to be exposed to those career interests. So, again, another phase of this is to actually push down the career fare, or just career awareness, to the middle school level. So, your point is very well taken.
Very good. Slide number nine is the second one that you had, the pyramid. It's labeled current delivery of instruction, but I think that may be something that's future. And I was wondering, how soon do you think that that might happen?
Okay.
Is that part of your four-year rollout as well?
It is. And, again, what we're seeing, this current delivery of instruction, what we're seeing here is that, actually, that would be future. Wish I had changed that, because current delivery is basically fewer virtual partnerships, and then as we began to balance that, that we would have in the future. And I guess the reason I left it current is because even as early as next year, with the North Carolina School of Science and Math, we will have more of the virtual partnerships. But as early as next year, we will be making strides toward rolling that out. We feel very good about our bandwidth capacity, and, again, that's the reason I brought these folks with me, to back up if we had any questions on the technical side, in terms of that. And, again, within our current budget that we're working with, we have some hopeful, some solutions for increasing the amount of hardware. We realize that our students need those one-to-one devices to be able to really increase these virtual partnerships, so that is also a part of the plan.
Glad to hear that. I know that our Economic Development Commission is already working with the City of Albemarle and other partners, looking at how do we expand broadband, and how do we connect to the information highway? There are several projects, public works projects, that are going on right now, that will help Stanley County potentially to reach out to where the information highway is. Closest place to us is probably Highway 601. And there, I know there's some things being done, and our Economic Development Commission is studying that. So, we're very interested in having the bandwidth, but we also know that it might require the individual gadgets, as I call them, the tools that the students have to have in order to make that work.
Well, fortunately, and you talked about the changes, when I was a classroom teacher, first started teaching, we had the huge, you know, Apple IIe's that would fill up this whole counter here, and they were very expensive also. And obviously, we've seen the cost of these pieces of hardware come down, and we're looking at some very cost-effective ways that we could implement some one-to-one, and, you know, at this point, Brandon will kick me if I say a whole lot more before it...
We're telling ourselves, when I went to NC State, the computers filled up the whole basement floor of the textile building, I remember that as well.
But the devices must be there.
Yeah. And I remember working with Neil and some others years ago, about looking at trying to put laptops in the hands of elementary students in North Albemarle, and that didn't fly back then. And, but I know, we've been working on this for a number of years.
Well, I hope the next time I come back, I can share with you some positive as far as how we're actually going to do that. We did, just as a side point, we utilized a part of our Race to the Top money to put wireless access in all of our schools. So, our schools are really in good shape as far as wireless access.
And, again, I don't want to put you in a bind, but can you give us some examples of matching up these four areas with the, what did you call them, the learning, specialized learning sites? Can you give us some examples? Have you decided, or are you leaning toward making certain high schools those specialized learning sites? And will students then get to choose?
Okay. We are in the process of matching up, and, again, we're matching the resources and the programs that are currently in the schools, to help determine which sites would be best matched with the current schools out there. So, yes, in the very near future, we will be actually announcing which schools that we propose. I prefer not tonight, since we haven't announced that to our board yet, but, again, we're, in fact, we met with some high schools this afternoon. So, yes, we are. And, again, we all know that as a freshman, you come into high school, and, again, a critical part of that freshman year is to get that sound, basic program. You've got your basic courses you've got to take. Our goal is with the freshman class of 2013-14, again, that our goal is by the time this group graduates four years from now, that this program will have developed, and enough alternatives options will have been added by that point, that they will be able to graduate with a seal denoting which particular pathway or academy they've gone through. It would be, again, because of the online options, we hope that a student, if they so choose, they may be able to stay in their home high school for some of these areas, and get the bulk of the courses at their home high school being delivered on, like, onsite at the home high school. But we would also, again, we have the idea of the seminars, maybe instructors that would move from one site to the next, to provide seminars throughout the county, or perhaps with the scheduling that a student, and right now, we already have students that may go to, from point A to B, and to take a specialized program, such as ROTC or cosmetology. And while they're there, they may take a math course or an English course during that time. So, again, those, we don't have all the details worked out, but I do see students being dual-enrolled between high schools, and taking a lot of the instruction online.
Okay. And I know that you have a strategic planning committee, and understand that our county manager and Commissioner Shuto have been asked to serve on that. I'm sure they'll be providing information from the commissioners, but, and I was going to say this later, under something else I was going to report on, but I was really excited about the county commissioner retreat, because we talked about some of the things that you're talking about tonight. We talked, really, we came out of our retreat with four things. One is to be forward-thinking, next was to have investments, not just expenses, but things that give us a good return on the money that we do spend. Third thing was to make sure that we were building infrastructure for the next generation or two, as best we can. And, you know yourself, that schools or water lines, or even IT infrastructure doesn't get built overnight, and it needs to last as long as possible. And then, the last thing was, we want to make wise investments, and things that will honor the next generation, it won't be just about things that are going on right now. So, it sounds like that we're aligned. I think that comments were made that day also indicate that we're very interested in doing things that forward our education system, because we know that that is a key to economic development, and, of course, that is part of our responsibility. So, thank you for your presentation, and we appreciate, and look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan, anyone else? If not, thank you very much for being here.
Okay. Thank you. We'll certainly keep you updated as this project moves along.
Thank you. If I may add one more thing, and I'm going to talk to the commissioners after, I'm sure you guys are going to leave, but on June the 4th, there is a meeting that's going to be held in Charlotte, connected to this Connect Our Future meeting, and it's called a Reality Check 2050. It's actually put on by the Urban Land Institute, but the county will, Stanley County will have the opportunity to have at least 12 people there, out of the 400 that will be invited across about a 17-county region. So, we hope that we'll have a good representation of folks from Stanley County, and it may be that we need someone there from public education. So, June the 4th, please consider that and talk about that, and I'll be back in touch with you.
I feel certain we would be honored to be a part of that, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is a presentation by our Health Director, Mr. Dennis Joyner. I think he has two items to present to us tonight. Welcome, Dennis.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here without the animal control ordinance on the agenda.
You mean you didn't bring it?
It's in my stuff back there. It goes with me pretty much everywhere I go. I have two items here, and I don't know which one you have first in front of you, but I will, I'll go ahead and start with the one regarding a home health agency. We have experienced some pretty rapid-fire resignations in some nurse positions that we've had some difficulty filling and recruiting for. And we've sort of reached a critical point at this juncture to need to fill those positions so we can continue to see patients. And one option for doing that in a short stop-gap kind of manner is to enter a contract for essentially a staffing agency to assist with some of the nursing functions. It would be over a certain period of time to meet those particular needs. And in order to do that, I'm requesting that we move some funds from our home health fund balance to cover those particular costs. We have $585,000 in the fund balance that we do utilize periodically throughout the year. It's to also shore up the budget if we run a little bit short each year, but as you know, the home health program is a pay-as-you-go program. And in order for us to pay as we go, we have to be seeing the patients. So, this is one necessity, I think, at this point, to look at contracting for some service here, to try to pull us through some of this downtime.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone have a question or comment? It's a pleasure to the board.
I approve the budget amendment.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Dennis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shuto. Any further discussion? Here in all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you. And the next item.
The next item relates to our animal control program and the Stanley County Humane Society. We have two small animal housing units, or cages, that are not being heavily used at this time at the animal shelter. Those units have a total of 13 individual sections for it, and are typically used for housing cats. The Stanley County Humane Society, as many of you know, has been a big partner in the work that we do out at the animal shelter. It is a licensed animal rescue... It is a licensed animal rescue organization, and they've recently moved into a facility on Baden Road that's going to allow them to expand their operation to be able to foster and adopt animals here in Stanley County, maybe even on a more greater level than they have in the past. As you also know, the Humane Society pulls a lot of animals from our shelter, which is a wonderful thing for, for those, for those animals. And promoting responsible pet ownership and adoption is, is a critical thing for us to be about here in Stanley County. Because those units are not being heavily used right now, and the, and the Humane Society is in a position to use them, we would like to request authorization to allow them to, to borrow those units at their facility. Those units would remain property of the county and could be returned to the shelter if such time was needed that we needed to get them back. But I think it's a better, it's the best way to utilize these resources at this time, and I would recommend that we be allowed to, allow them to use those at no cost and draft an agreement up that would speak to that effect.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions, comments? I'd have one, just comment that, you know, I don't know how destructible they might be, but in the, in your agreement, maybe include they would replace something that's broken.
For damage, yeah.
That's the only thing. Anyone else? What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we approve the request.
Motion by Commissioner Shudo to approve. Second by Commissioner Dennis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you, Dennis. Our next agenda item is from our planning and zoning, but will not be presented by Michael Sandy, but by our county manager, Mr. Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you first consideration this evening, our two interlocal agreements with the city of Locust and the town of New London for zoning and code enforcement contractual services. We currently do this for the town of Baden and the town of Norwood. These contracts are consistent with those terms, and we would just be expanding our, providing these services to now four municipalities instead of two. So be more than happy to answer any questions that I can, but like I say, that we've approved these contracts in the past, and the terms are consistent, so.
Any questions? Can we have one motion for both of these?
Yes, you may.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? I have a motion by Commissioner Dennis to approve both, and I have a second. Second by Commissioner Shudo. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda, and on our consent agenda tonight is minutes from our board retreat of February 22nd and a regular meeting in March, on March 4th, library request, financial request, and health request. Entertaining motion. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Donovan. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Thank you. At this time, we come to the part of our agenda where those in the audience, if they'd like to come speak to commissioners about anything, would be glad to listen and hear your comments. Anyone wish to come forward? Ask you to state your name, where you're from. Give you about three minutes. Seeing none, we'll have one. Mr. Bryan, come forth.
This is a little unusual. Brian Grace from Albemarle. Mr. Chairman and members of this honorable commission, I know it's a little unusual for a reporter that covers this body to address it, but a special set of circumstances behooves me to break that boundary. As you know by now, this is the last meeting of this commission I'll cover as I'll be moving to Morganton to work for their newspaper starting next week. And ever since I arrived here, I've heard about how the people here love this place and their families. So I believe you will understand my decision to leave, knowing this move takes me much closer to my home and my family. Before I left, though, I wanted to thank each of you publicly and the staff here for accepting me and giving me your trust that allowed me to better do my job of letting the citizens of this county know what's happening in their community. I know for elected leaders to trust a reporter is not always an easy thing to do, but in my rules of journalism, it's an absolute necessity that both the reporter and those he covers be completely honest with each other about what they're doing. And in that regard, I can report you all have done that. While you may not have totally answered every question all the time, you never ran from those questions or were irritated at them being asked. My job has never been to convince people that one side or the other is right or wrong on any issue. My job was only to report what was said, what happened, and do it fairly and accurately. What I do is as much of a public trust as what you do as elected officials. I hope during my time here, I kept that trust and never let the people of this county down. I've been fortunate to see the beauty of this county, both natural and in its people. However, I did have a Stanley County bucket list of items I'd hoped to accomplish. One of those was to be on the radio with Leon, but I never got that invitation. And the other one was, I wanted to write the final story on Alcoa and the Not Still Young. I might get that chance yet. But all kidding aside, I did want to thank you and the citizens of this county for embracing this Tennessee boy and making this a home away from home. I just hope I did you right. My prayer is that God continually bless the good people of Stanley County.
Thank you, Brian. We're going to miss you, buddy. Good luck to you. Anyone else? Commissioner Donovan, comments?
Just, just I'll repeat what I had said earlier in some respects. I wanted to make sure that we did have an opportunity to highlight the key themes of the retreat Andy has sent the board of commissioners, that summary. And I think it's very telling as to the type of discussion and the spirit of the day. And I, I think that it bodes well for Stanley County as we continue to make these investments for our future. I did also want, though, to let you know that the Stanley, excuse me, the Central Line Council of Governments Executive Board met March the 13th, and part of what we're doing is getting updates on the Connect Our Future. I encourage our board members to stay abreast of what's going on. You can go to the website, connectourfuture.org, I believe it is, and make sure that you're seeing what's going on. There is a lot of work. There is a lot of activity, especially on the economic development side, I believe, of things. And I would also repeat and announce to you that this Reality Check 2050 is a, a meeting that's being hosted by the Urban Land Institute. It is going to be held in Charlotte on April the 4th, I believe I said. That date's not popping out in front of me right here, but want to make sure that we are represented well. They're, they're planning to invite 400 people, and they're just, they're dividing that based on population across the region. They're also asking that we have representatives for each from public sector, private sector, and a not-for-profit sector, education being part of the not-for-profit sector. So I've got some ideas of folks, but I would probably like to share this with the clerk or with the manager and let them shoot this around to everybody so that you can make some suggestions. I'll certainly be responsible for sending those in to COG from us. And then I believe that they will take the opportunity to send out invitations to those people that we would like to see there. And it'd also be helpful if, if you know somebody, if you personally would make that contact as well. But again, this is something I think that's really moving forward and moving fast, and we want to certainly be at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Donovan. Commissioner Morton?
No comment.
Commissioner Dennis?
The only thing I'll say, I hope you all read in the paper, we had a good meeting at EDC at the Vineyard with, recognizing our allies that helped us for this first time for EDC, the real good Brian, you all did a good job, Leon too. Appreciate you all being there. Had a good meeting.
Very good. Commissioner Shudo?
Just a couple of things. I'm, Dennis Joyner pretty much covered a lot of the Health Department issues that we covered. One is the nursing problem with, with people. We're trying to figure out why they're leaving, whether it's pay or whatever. Then also, I think there's a dental hygienist position open in the Health Department right now. There's quite a few there. There's few positions open, so if you all know people looking for jobs, have them go to the county website, see what's open. Then also, the ADDC meeting, they're working on their outdoor Bonanza, and that's coming up shortly. That's, I believe, their biggest fundraiser of the year. And then just want to let you, last week, I took a tour. I went out to the Baden Business Park and took a tour of the Alcoa plant. It's pretty impressive. I went out there last year, well, in the last spring, and I remember talking to Tommy Gibson. He said, you know, people want the jobs out here, but they had to go through this process of dismantling their equipment and just making the stuff ready for growth. And in that, within, pretty much about, been a year since I've been out there. It's just amazing what they've done out there to get things ready for new businesses coming in. A couple of things that was interesting, we're going through those old, those old four buildings, and it looked like they could make an Arnold Schwarzenegger movie in there because it was dark and everything like that. And he said, actually, that what I thought was kind of interesting, that they get calls from producers to do, you know, to, to see if they had, to come out and actually shoot some scenes out of the dams and stuff. They said, we need, need a place for some scenery. So he said, no one's ever come out, but they may have had calls about that. Another thing I thought was interesting is how they, they have a partnership with the National Guard, and they actually let the National Guard use their, their place for training drills and stuff like that. So that's pretty, pretty cool. And then, and then I did take a tour of ERI, and that's quite an impressive operation. I was at their old place, and then now, this is my first time in the new place. I think they got 44 employees, and they got like one-fourth of the place sectioned off where they're not using because they're, they're going to get a, I think, a $5 million piece of equipment in next year to do some, you know, like about the length of a football field or something, this machine that just crushes things and everything else. That's quite an impressive operation out there, the recycling business. So I just want to report on that, and that's it.
And I have no comments. County attorney?
No comment, sir. Thank you.
County manager?
No comment. Thank you, sir.
I will entertain a motion at this time to recess this meeting, go into closed session to consult with the county attorney in accordance with GS 143-318, decimal eleven, parentheses A, parentheses three, to discuss 411 water quality permit intervention and APGI's public records request lawsuit. Have a motion to recess by Commissioner Donovan and a second by Commissioner Dennis. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. We're now recessed.